The garbage truck didn't wind up, that was small.
Call tonight's meeting to order.
Brayden, here.
Livin', Mirabella, McCarthy, Whitmore, White.
Not here. Please stand for tonight's invocation, please, with allegiance. The invocation will be led by Sarah Martin, Youth Ministry Director at Martha Point Church.
You would prepare yourselves for prayer. Heavenly Father, I thank you for this day. I thank you for this village that we all love so very much. I pray over those who protect us and serve our community. I pray over those who reside and find this place as their home. I pray over those that work here and find resources to provide to their family. God, I pray over the carnival happening this weekend, those that will be in attendance, those that are working this event, and I just pray joy and excitement over that. And for those in authority in this room, I pray over them as they work to make our village the absolute best it can be. I pray over this meeting, the things discussed, and the decisions made. Let those be made with wisdom and discernment. All of this I pray in which one's having a name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first order or first item approved of minutes. I need a motion to approve the May 21, 2024 Board Meeting Minutes. Discussion on that. Roll call, please.
Brayden.
Aye.
Livin', Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. We'll move on to Mayor's Report. I need a motion to adopt a resolution appointing John Lewis to Emergency Management Director.
Salute.
Second. Discussion on that. Roll call, please.
Brayden, A.C., Livin', Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. A couple of other items. We just had a groundbreaking today for Smith Electrical Contractors and State Line Storage. I thank all the people that came out today. It was well attended, and they will be giving us updates as the building is built, and we're going to keep track of that very closely. So I'm glad for that. I congratulate Joe and Andrea Smith for putting up the, basically, the first business or building since, the first one since the Dollar General. So I'm glad for that. So keep you posted on that. Second item, the Seventh Street Music Series will be, once again, over a parking lot by the community center. It's going to be on Wednesday nights, and we have a collaboration with the Zion Park District. We do our event on Wednesday, concert in the park, and Zion is on Thursday, and then down at the Beer Garden will be on Friday. So we're trying to work out so people have things to do, you know, on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday nights. Next item, the Summer Fair starts this Thursday through Sunday. It will be hot. Drink lots of water, bring lots of water with you, or buy water at the county carnival. But thanks to all the sponsors of this year's Summer Fair. We've had many, and thanks to all of them. I'll be sending a personal letter out to all of them. So come for the music and fun, and fireworks will be Saturday night at approximately 9:45. That's all I have. We have no Bill's Ministers' Report, Clark's Correspondent.
Here, Mr.
No business, nothing. We move on to new business, Committee Reports, Administration and Community Reports. Ian, trustee, trustee McCarthy.
I make a motion to approve the accounts payable warrant, 2024 S-2, in the amount of $322,393.58.
Any discussion on the warrant? Roll call, please.
Brayden, A.C., Livin', Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
I make a motion to approve the contracts with Schwartz, Trummer, and Company to do the annual audit. Was that a different company than we used?
John Blacker.
Well, I've heard for about 20 years.
I didn't recognize that.
You pronounce that really well.
What?
You pronounce that really well.
I mean, I know John Blacker, I just didn't recognize.
The person has the same one.
He threatened to leave if we didn't clean our house. We cleaned our house, so he stayed on. He threatened to leave us if we didn't clean our house.
I just, I know John, but I don't remember that, Schwartz, Trummer. Schwartz, Trummer, now I can't say it.
Very good. Any discussion on that? Roll call.
Brayden.
Aye.
Livin'.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I make a motion to approve the special event application permit by Spark Dispensary for an event to be held on June 22, 2024, from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m.
Any discussion on that?
It's just the same thing like they did the last time, just kind of a little event over there.
Yeah, it went well last. Two trucks. And they put out a nice one. I don't know what band they're going to have, but, yeah. Good. All right. Roll call.
Brayden.
Aye.
Livin', Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I make a motion to waive the rules of the President Board Trustees and to waive first and second briefings of the ordinance to adopt as presented for the class, to approve the class of Latuski subdivision.
Discussion on that. Roll call.
Brayden.
Aye.
Livin'.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Make a motion to waive the first and second briefing and to adopt as presented the ordinance amending the zoning act of the Village of Luntel Parlor by rezoning the VFW property at 1112 Sharon Road.
Discussion on that. I know that was approved by the PCB.
Was there any other feedback from the media on it?
No, no, they were all very much in support of it.
It was unanimous.
It was.
Okay. Roll call.
Sorry, I was just going to say, I know they've been wanting that for a long time.
They have, and I think it was understandable how, why they wanted it, and I think it was a really decent decision for the board.
It was a very well presented planning and zoning.
It really was, absolutely.
It could have been done many years ago, but they didn't want to come to a finding and zoning board.
It's not the first time I heard about it over all these years, so I'm glad to hear that it's taking place.
Me too. All right. Roll call.
Brayden.
Aye.
Livin'.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And make a motion to approve the request to your brush, Edward Jones, to use the west side of parking lots at the community center to host the 2024 Seventh Street Music Series, waiving any fees, and to grant additional permission to Time Out Sports Bar to expand the Beer Garden for the series again, waiving any fees.
Discussion on that.
And it says, you know, the same as we've done in past years.
Exactly. Roll call.
Brayden.
Aye.
Livin'.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, trustee McCarthy. We'll move on to public safety, trustee White.
Thank you. I make a motion that we pass a resolution setting new rates for ambulance and paramedic services.
Any discussion on that?
We're just coming up with, from my understanding, is the rates that are already out there, we're lagging.
Just keep it up with that. Yeah, we have to.
These are the principal rates we're going to be adjusting to in the future are the ones set by Illinois Department of Family and Health Services, or whatever they call it this week. Keep changing the names of the departments, I can't keep up with them.
And here's a discussion. Roll call, please.
Brayden, A.C., Livin', Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I make a motion that authorize payment to Illinois Fire Chiefs Association not to exceed $5,300 for fire department promotional exams.
Motion seconded. Any discussion on that item? Roll call, please.
Brayden.
A.C.
Livin'.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Make a motion to authorize the purchase of Lex Paul for the fire department financial impact would be $2,267.72.
And the police already have it, so that's why it's going to be such a nominal fee, and it's great to have this for the fire department. Any other discussion?
Yeah, it's just policy, and it's already implemented within the police, so it's just clean enough, you know, policy.
We need it for the fire department.
For the structure.
It works so well for the police department, only makes sense to spread the word.
And they've used it quite a bit.
They really have.
All right. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Brayden.
A.C.
Livin'.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, trustee White. We move on to public works and recreation, trustee Mirabella.
I need a motion to consider approval of payment number two for the Village Roof Project.
An amount of $103,410. I just want Larry to know for transparency, we had a grant of $250,000 for our roof. The roof cost actually came to $258,000, so the roof up here, I mean, cost the village $8,000. The other $250 was paid by the state.
Those needed, because it was a hard part of building, so.
We could never afford to pay $258,000, so we got $250,000 from the state, so just like everyone to know that. Okay, any other comments on that item? Here, roll call.
Brayden.
A.C.
Livin'.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Second item, I have a motion to consider approval of payment for B.A. Solutions for lighting upgrade of the village hall in the amount of $43,476.63.
Any discussion? I'd also like to say, I talked to Tim today, out of that $43,476 that cost us, I really don't know if I have the number, but I know we paid, ComEd gave us a, I guess, a payment of about 20% of that, and we paid 80% of the lighting, but it's still a 20% savings because ComEd's helped. Do you know the dollar amount total, Tim, on that?
I don't have an estimate. It was in the original packet when we approved it. But the estimate was we were going to save about $2,000 a month.
They both, they are giving us a bonus for using energy saved.
Okay. Any other discussion on that item? Okay, roll call.
Brayden.
A.C.
Livin'.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried.
The third item, I have a motion to consider approving engineer services for 2024 street improvement program of South Street and Woodland, something in terms of.
Second. Any discussion? When is that, when are they going to start the streets?
Oh, it won't be until this fall. We're way behind schedule.
Okay.
We're sending the core samples to IDOT right now. And getting IDOT's approval to use motor fuel tax. So our next step would be to go to bid, which will happen probably in the next 30, 45 days. And then we'll pick the winner, and then we'll be able to schedule it and give you a better estimate, but we're thinking September.
Thank you, Tim.
It's been longer seasons too, as you've noticed, it's, we get better weather towards the end of fall, so.
Oh, yeah, we got plenty of time.
It doesn't, it won't hurt.
Okay. Thank you. Roll call.
Brayden.
A.C.
Livin'.
Aye.
Mirabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, trustee Mirabella. We move on to public comments. I would just ask you to provide us with your name and your address.
My name's Kirk Barrettson, I've lived at 1026 Fulton for 27 years. We're having a big neighbor problem. We've got photos, videos, village tag, all three of his vehicles that are on the open for no registration, and they were supposed to be towed today, nothing happened. Mr. Mayor, you came by and looked?
I did.
I sure hope you're a better chiropractor than you are a mayor, because Tom's going to hell in a handbasket.
I know.
Under your watch, sir.
I went to the police department today, and they're going to be keeping an eye on that property. We can't do anything.
Keeping an eye on it? I've been keeping an eye on it since 2015, when the back moved in. I'm dying of cancer. I got nothing to lose. If the village doesn't do something, maybe I'll take matters into my own hands.
We are working on it.
You're not working on it, sir. You're lying.
No, I'm not. I did go over to the police department, so I'm very sorry they're not here, they can elaborate on what they've done. You know, we can only do so much, and we're trying to do the best we can. I mean, Sanjay, our community developer, he was over there today.
Is that Sanjay?
Yes.
Have you gone by?
Yes.
What do you think?
I could only.
I would like that as your next door neighbor. I'm pretty sure if it was your neighbor, this wouldn't be happening. Right?
One of my neighbors has got problems.
Right? Be truthful, right?
One of my neighbors has got problems, but.
I'm recusing myself from commenting anymore because I'm going to lose, like, cool. Rob, next time there's a mayor or thing, run for mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
My name's Nicole Mamoser. If you don't mind, I'd like to hand out some photos of the neighborhood that we're discussing. So my address is 1021 Fulton. So about three years ago, we did have a neighbor move in that opted to fill his yard with mulch, in his words, to avoid cutting grass. So to accomplish this, he contacted local tree service companies to dump chipped trees into his yard and, I guess what would be considered the back of the side yard of his residence. Rather than break the chipped wood level, there's over 30 mounds of chipped trees now in his yard that is impossible to maintain. There's no weed control, there's weeds that are probably seven, eight feet tall, there's smaller trees that have rooted into these piles, and the occupant travels six-plus months of every year overseas and isn't home for most of the winter, spring, or summer months. So we are not able to contact him and voice our concern. On the other side of him, or I guess two houses down from him, we have a house that for at least the past 15 years that I have been a resident, was considered a natural yard. However, the homeowner at the time had utilized native plants and natural materials to create a low maintenance yard that was rarely mowed but was tended to in a way that it wasn't a nuisance to neighbors. However, last spring, that house sold as well, and the new homeowner has only maintained the front yard. The vast yard is what I can only describe as an overgrown forest. The environment in these yards has become a haven for small animals such as raccoons, groundhogs, fox, and insects. In the past two years, our neighborhood has seen a significant increase in wildlife, which has begun affecting our lives. Three weeks ago, our neighbor's 80-pound dog was significantly scratched in a fight with a groundhog. A fox can be seen walking through the neighborhood throughout the day, every day, which leads us to believe it may be sick, as they are nocturnal animals typically. Raccoons have become a nuisance as garbage cans are ransacked almost nightly, and there's a significant difference in insects on the east side of our neighborhood versus the west side. We have small children and small pets in our neighborhood that are at risk. We recognize that wildlife in a suburban setting next to acres of forest preserve is reality. However, we feel that the years of untapped yards is the contributing factor to a significant increase in wildlife in our neighborhood within the last two years. Not only do these properties create risk for wildlife, but they also are an eyesore. As a homeowner, I take pride in maintaining my yard and keep it aesthetically pleasing, as do most of my neighbors. I even took the task of mowing a vacant property next door to me all last summer, which has since turned over to a new owner and is being maintained. I'm embarrassed to have friends and family come to visit as they drive down the street and see our neighborhood, and it looks pretty rough. I have gone through every ordinance in the past couple of days to see what we have as far as lawn care goes. The only two that I can find are rodent and insect control and weed control, and that's what I'm asking to be enforced, is, are those two ordinances. Other than that, I'm here to ask what our options are as a neighborhood.
Can I ask a question? Is this the same house?
This is a same, it's two houses.
What is the address?
1036 Fulton Avenue. Come by and take a look.
Oh, I will.
And then two houses north of that, I don't know what that position, I believe.
Two houses north.
North, 1022 Fulton. Your other name is the north.
That's okay, I'll come.
He's working on cleaning that up. He is.
Yeah, we're concerned about the back though, because it's the continuation.
So the 1036 Fulton is the house that Kurt talked about as well?
Yes, please stop by and look.
And then the second house, they're cleaning it up, but you're concerned about.
They cleaned up the front yard, the backyard is going to be the last four or five pictures that are in that pan.
So the first five pictures are neighbors, majority of our lot, well maintained. The next three pictures are the house to the north that we're talking about, and the last bunch are pictures, I took them all from, I was on his property, I walked around, the alley is overgrown, you got ivies going across comment line to the, to the west, to an apartment building to the west, taking over their cable and electrical lines.
You, Sanjay, you had one of those properties last week, maybe I gave David a call, and I believe.
Isn't that a?
I was there today. Oh, I know. Is it bad, just, are you saying what these pictures are saying?
So I can only perform a curbside inspection.
Hundred percent.
What I saw in the street today was a front yard more or less cut and trimmed. There are weeds, but they appear to be mainly flowers. The back of the yard appears to be very high, overgrown grass. That is all I could see from the street at this point.
So I know we're down on manpower, and it was discussed today that, Chief Laurie's not here to speak to this, but I talked to David, but we're going to start sending a CSO around with a tablet to take pictures to help expedite this stuff, because it's gone rampant with the farmer, it really has. You can drive around, I can drive around, I did some work for some people I know. I'm sitting east side the other day, I was over there, right across from Otter's House. It's gotten bad, but we're going to enlist a CSO officer, from what David tells me, and they're going to help us. So it's real time, and then the sent information can be sent here. We're going to give a phone call. The phone call doesn't work, we're going to start issuing, from what I was told.
What do we do when our neighbor is overseas for six, nine months at a time?
Yeah, they put a bag of pictures.
That's going to be a questionable, our attorney, on what we can do as a neighborhood. And I'm putting them on the spot, but that's, just something Bob would have to look into to see what we can do, except people aren't here.
And when did you think the cars were tagged?
His cars were tagged about a week or so ago. I can personally care less about the cars. Five days ago, they were supposed to be removed today. I can care less about the cars. You have a fox that has made a home in there, had a fox go after my dog this morning.
We've had groundhogs attack that dog.
Did both. My dogs crawled in from under my new stockade, or privacy fence that I spent $15,000 on, so I would have to look at it. And Donald's been, we've been talking, officer, about Donald's been over for the last year fifty times.
Countless times.
Countless times, and so far, the only thing that's been dug is two cars been tagged five days ago, and the car is still staying there. We can care less about the cars, we want the foxes, these rodents, out of our neighborhood.
Right, but we should be using what we have as disposal to take action on things, and if we've tagged a car, you only have to have it tagged for 24 hours before towing it out.
Cars don't bother us. We need these rodents out of our neighborhood. They are cleaned up, it's as simple as that. They need to clean up the yard.
You got piles.
If it was next door to any of them. Not mulch, it is wood chip, it's mulch treated, treated product. Chipped trees are not treated. There's poison plants growing back there, there are foxes, groundhogs, living burrows, skunks burrowed in these piles of wood chips. It's unacceptable, we have little kids. These animals get the stumper, they'll tag anybody, humans, children, animals. I've had two poisonous plants move over from over there. It's called poke weed, and the other one was poison hemlock.
Hemlock?
That's where it comes from. It could kill us or our dogs, either one of them. So that I have some frame of reference, this is the first I've personally heard of this. Do you have an estimate of how large an area of the? Hundred and forty-five hundred feet. It's a, it's a. It's a double lot, and they do, they go by. And you disturb the entire? There's three lots. The entire 10,000 square feet, huh? Yeah, I mean, it's the majority, the house, it's mine, the house.
It's the side, I would call it the side yard and the backyard.
When I'm talking about a particular, this is a frame of references, there's, there are regulations on stormwater management, something called watershed. I called someone about that. They never called me back. You raised the elevation on this property, probably. If I make the phone call, maybe they'll listen to me. It's possible, you know. I'm trying to find out if it's a large enough area that it falls within their jurisdiction. And if they disturb more than, I think it's 5,000 square feet. If they need to find it, over $5,000, definitely.[1588.48]
Well, we'll take a look at that as a possibility. You know, that most of the communities, there are limitations on regulations that you can put up. Most places you don't need them. And people tend to think that generally speaking, a community that does overregulate its people isn't a very good thing in the grand scheme of things. But if you're suffering to this degree, we'll try to find the answer. I just don't quite know what it is as I sit here.
Okay, that's all we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
All I want to say is, now Michelle Van Eschew Phillips, I live at ten forty-one Fulton, is one of my houses. My son lives there with my three-year-old grandson. When my grandson gets out of the car, there's a big tree right there. And of course, wild grapevines and everything taking over that tree. He always likes to run over there. It's like a little forest for a kid. Now I'm terrified to let my grandson out of the car because of this fox. I'm fed up. We've dealt with it for a few years. Something has to be done. And it, like you said, it's horrible wood chips. I have sat there with her in his backyard when that dump truck has come, and the smell of some of this stuff is horrendous. It's horrible. And something needs to be done before somebody else did. It's bad enough that animals are getting hurt. But that fox could have got my grandson. And I, and there's other kids in that, yawn that block now. A senior, I mean, I got a bad knee. Baby did me. Something needs to be done. Thank you.
Michelle.
Michelle. So she says ten forty-one?
Yeah. I own ten forty-one.
The neighbor that's gone six months of the year, he's the one with the mulch found?
Yep.
Okay, just any context?
We will work on this, I promise. I mean, I heard about it from Michelle at the Memorial Day parade. I brought it to the police. I brought it to Sanjay at the time. All I can do is what there to be. I can't go over there on my own. I don't want to legally, I can't.
We understand that, but we've been more than, I mean, we complained a year ago. We complained two, three years ago.
I wasn't aware of two years ago. I mean, maybe you did.
Yeah.
Maybe you did it internal, but you didn't reach out to me and tell them the memorial day. And I did come to the village. I talked to Dave. I talked to Sanjay. I talked to the police department chief. And we'll definitely follow up on this. I'll make sure that this, we do whatever we can do legally to remedy the situation, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Rob, good to see you. Long time.
Anybody else for public comments? All right, move on until we finish business. I'll start down with trustee Whitmore.
Yes, sir. And most of you know we have our annual summer fair this weekend. This Thursday, we have trivia night hosted by trustee McCarthy. Saturday, we do have our talent show, so make sure you sign up. We've got a lot of fun acts, and prizes can hand out. Some of you may or may have not have known this last week. We had eight village residents and those representing the village on the Miss Illinois stage. Actually, trustee McCarthy, trustee Marbella, and myself all had daughters involved. I just want to point out that they represented the village in such an amazing way. The girls did absolutely amazing, and I'm very proud of them. Congratulations to Smith Electrical. It's really nice just to see new businesses coming into town. And that is all I have.
Thank you, trustee Whitmore. Trustee Brayden.
I am also going to congratulate the Smiths for their groundbreaking business and welcome. And we're very happy to have you. I just want to remind people that the kids are out there on bikes, and stop signs and roadways mean nothing to them. Had about six of them just cross right in front of me in the last week, so.
About zero.
Yeah, it's, so I just, I know everybody knows, but just a reminder that they're out there. School's out, and they don't know what danger is, I guess, so.
All right, thank you, trustee Brayden. Trustee McCarthy.
I had something else, but I forgot it. I was going to say, congratulations to the Smith family, because they've been in the power over twenty years, but their offices were in, I think, Beach Park for a number of years, so it's very cool. They're able to move their offices through the harbor. Now that they have the state line storage facilities, include their electric business there. And thank you to Peter Brush, the work he does each year of music series. And like I said, there's something else that I can't remember.
If you think about it when I get CDN, I'll come back. They keep trusting. Trustee Weiss.
Can I do what trustee McCarthy did since I'm older than him?
Sure.
If you can remember this.
I just want to say, you know, it was a real pleasure to follow to the groundbreaking ceremony of the Smiths. The light break. Glad that they moved here, and it's really going to be a great opportunity for Smiths and for the community in the power business. That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Weiss. Trustee.
I also want to thank the Smith family and the residents here, and wish them the best of luck.
Thank you. Trustee Marbella.
Yes, he's, he was trying to get here for a long time, and we could never find a spot big enough for his liking. Going to get that come up as purpose, but it worked out good, because he wasn't a big part of it. He does a lot of this. He's a union shop too, does a, he lists that, but he, it's a good thing for our community because he employs people that live in our village in some way, right, pleasant ways, too, so that's a good thing. The other thing I had is I lost, like I did say, we are going to be using a C S O, so people know. We've been, all our departments have been down people, and I'm not making excuses, but we have. We have a pretty good team here, I believe, with our village. They handle stuff quite a bit, and they handle it good. So we're going to be implementing a C S O. I wish chief was here to talk, but it's in the works. They're going to take pictures. It's going to come back to the office. The ladies are going to call, give one chance. Like I said, I know this should have been going on, but we dropped the ball, and I apologize for that. But we're going to get after it, so just know that we're going to be working on it. Just glad that you guys did do till now, but you should have had to, but came up here, presented this, and now, obviously, it's in the limelight, which shouldn't have had to go to this, but it did. We're here now, so we're going to take care of it. The other thing is the fair. I'll be out there, I'm sure, trying to help Scott. So we had a summer helper there, was with us, laughed us, so we always run into problems, but we have pretty good support there from people that were in our rec board, so we had a lot. And there's some late nights, you know, I've been out there late with these guys, cleaning up and picking up and getting ready for the next day. It'll be good. We are doing the Lions Club thing there at.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have, we're going to do a little, you know, it's just, we're going to do it later on at a village meeting, but we're going to do it just for them. The Lions Club's always there. They sell food and water. They have their little tent right by our, they're in there all the time, whether it's three people or ten, they man it. And it's usually the older people. I've had to walk several of them to their cars because we eat, so hopefully they're, we're going to stay cool, and we'll, we'll help them out too, you know, help them carry their stuff. Let's just have a good weekend, come out for the fireworks, and come out for the fun. The carnival food, I know what this is. I always buy it, it's good. I've had it all the years and all that stuff, so come out, spend some money. And we've had some wind damage, and I spoke to Tim briefly before the meeting. We had a garbage truck knocked out and stuff. If that stuff ever happens, feel free to call us if it's on the park. Obviously, we can help with it. I cut this one up myself just because that's me, and the guys came and picked it up because of the garbage truck. And the garbage truck called it in. The guy did, he called in, and they came and looked at it. You know, it wasn't a real big branch, but, and we have had wind damage, so if anything happens, I mean, don't abuse it, please, because we're busy enough, but if something does happen, we have no problem coming up to help. That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Marbella. You think about it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I just wanted to follow up on, just for concerns of the residents. I just wanted to say, you know, when it comes to things like this, I just want people to know that, you know, that, that staff are taking these things seriously and do, do want to help with these. So I don't, I hope people don't feel that, that staff aren't taking this seriously and aren't concerned, you know, with this, with this staff. They do need to be, you know, you just do need to stay in, in consistent communication with them, repeat these issues to them, continue to be in communication with them. You know, sometimes it means just repeatedly, you know, letting them know what the concerns are in doing that. You know, they, as trustee Marbella said, you know, you know, we hate to say it because it sounds like an excuse, but they are shorthanded, but, you know, if they do want to help, that's what they are here for. So just continue to let them know what the concerns are. They're not, you know, trying to blow anyone off or avoid it or not help with it. That's certainly not the case. They do want to help and do whatever they can, so, you know, we don't want anyone to feel that the staff aren't addressing it, and they're going to have to come to the board to get done. The staff do want to help and address those concerns, and that's what they're, they're here for. You know, just continue to talk to them and let them know what those, you know, what the issues are, and stay in contact with them as well. So I just want people to know that, yeah, that's what they're there for, and they do care.
Thank you, trustee McCarthy. And let you know, I know how to get a hold of Michelle. I know how to get a hold of Reed. I don't know how to get a hold of the gentleman, but I reached out to all of you and let you know what we decided to do. I'm going to talk to the attorney after the meeting. Appreciate it. Well, we'll try to expedite this as fast as we can.
In the meantime, that's.
I understand. I mean, I wouldn't want that house being next to me either.
And what's really sad is that house, that's history. That was the original house of that entire neighborhood. They owned that orchard that originally was there back in the day before they passed away.
Right.
These people bought it. But it's just sad.
Well, see what we can do. And I won't, I won't, I'll be talking to them maybe Tuesday, Thursday, I'm here and see what, what we can do. And I'll let you know as soon as I find something out, I'll let you know.
In the meantime, is there an option to contact a company that can potentially trap and relocate any of these animals that are living in the yard?
Well, I don't know.